I'd like to call to order the February 24th meeting of Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Casali.
Here.
Ms. Taseko.
Here.
Mr. Dolly.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Wexmanzki.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next, approval of the agenda.
Still move.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the February 10th regular meeting. There are no corrections.
Still move.
Move by Dalu, support by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, under old business, the real substance of our meeting this evening is we'll be reconvening, rezoning application number 02-13, requesting a change, which requesting a change from R1B, One Family Residential, to O2 and R6. Madam Secretary, would you read the public notice as was mailed to the residents?
Yes, Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant, Community ES Inc., Richard Hodgson, 6303 26 Mile Road, Suite 110, Washington, Michigan, 48094. Legal owner, Juralamo and Dominica Vitale, 47100 Shana Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315. Rezoning request, R1B, One Family Residential, to O2 Service Office and R6 Multi-Family Low Rise. Location, near the northeast corner of 21 Mile Road and Shana Road. Sidwell number 23-07-25-300-039, and 23-07-25-300-041. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, February 24th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be held during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was originally published in the CNG newspaper in August 2013. This time, we notified all the residents. 62 property owners and four applicants were notified on February 10th, 2014.
Okay, thank you. Did we receive any correspondence regarding this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive some correspondence just this evening, all of us, and basically, it was from several property owners, and they're all opposing the rezoning change.
Okay, thank you. All right, the format for this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner, or his representative, will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning, probably more specifically, you know, what changed from the last public hearing. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner, then I'll open the floor up to the public, and then finally, the petitioner may make concluding remarks. As a reminder, we've met and had to get a fairly lengthy meeting back in August regarding this issue. At that time, a decision was made to table, the petitioner requested some time to be able to meet with the residents, discuss further what they were proposing, and then come back on the agenda. And so that's where we're at, right here now. So if the petitioner wants to come up and give you name, address, and sign in, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anthony Penna appearing on behalf of the petitioner, 38600 Van Dyke, Sterling Heights, Michigan. Mr. Chairman stated, we were here August of last year. At the time, we requested the matter to be tabled, to have an opportunity to meet with the adjacent property owners about our proposed project. On August, or October 1st, we had a meeting. We sent out a letter to certain property owners, as well as the president of certain homeowners associations in the adjacent development, and we had a roundtable discussion. We listened a lot to what the, some of the concerns that the neighbors had, and we also talked about our project. And what I mean by that is, at the last meeting, and at the October 1st meeting, there was a lot of concern that the petitioner wanted to come in and wanted to put in apartments or stacked condo units. There was a concern. And it was a rightful concern, because if the zoning did get approved, and there were no conditions, then it was quite possible, under R6, that you could put in some form of apartments or high density. We, my client has no intentions whatsoever to put in apartments or any type of stacked condo units, and we explained that at the meeting. Not only did we explain that, but we showed them renderings here. The renderings show that my client wants to put in pods. There's various pods, there's about three or four units in each pod. There's going to be units about 1,500 to 2,000 square feet, with a master bedroom and master bath on the first floor, and then a bedroom above. These types of units are geared towards empty nesters or independent seniors. It's an alternative to assisted living. So, this is the product that my client wants to put in.
Do you mind if I interrupt for a quick second?
Sure.
I have a question for you. If this is what you're proposing, and what you've proposed for a while.
Right.
Is there a reason that you did not put this in as part of your application?
Well.
Because on this side of the table, none of us have seen any of this.
And I completely.
And so all we're being requested is to, you know, approve a change.
And I completely, and I understand that. Before I got involved, the applicant had already submitted for a conventional zoning. Typically, what I would have done is implement some sort of conditional zoning, so that we could implement some conditions ahead of time. But what we want to do tonight is we want to implement self-imposed conditions, saying that we want to put a product in that's going to be consistent with that rendering. That would be a condition that we would offer. We would also implement a condition that we're limiting the number of units to 27 units. Apartments are not going to go on this project. Stacked condo units are not going to go on this project. So, we're willing to make that a condition to move forward.
Are you willing to put that in writing, and put a plan together, and submit that plan?
I'm sorry?
Are you willing to put a plan together, submit that to the township to review?
Absolutely. I mean, that would be a conditional zoning. I mean, you would have to go through, and maybe Mr. Winn could add some input here. I mean, you would have to go through the whole site plan approval ahead of time, and that would be your conventional conditional rezoning. What we're asking for tonight is, we'd like to move forward, but we want to offer conditions on moving forward.
Mr. Winn.
What was odd about this is, we chatted, Mr. Penna, before you, after you made the submission, and I asked if that was your intention, because it's a little bit bewildering to me why you would offer this without giving us the opportunity to review the plans. We have reviewed multiple applications for conditional rezoning, and the normal way it's done is a site plan and the building plans are submitted along with the rezoning application. We don't have the benefit of having reviewed those plans. I mean, I've seen your plans, we talk about the counter.
Sure, right.
But I guess the question is, what's the purpose of this meeting, then? You're not expecting us to respond to your plans tonight, are you?
No, no, not at all. We would like to move forward with the condition, with implementing certain self-conditions on this project.
Well, you are asking us.
To move forward.
On some conditions that we haven't had a chance to review, on plans we haven't had a chance to review.
That would be correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Winn.
That's not the conventional way it's done, and I explained that to you earlier.
Right. I mean, we did have a discussion, Mr. Winn, and I did explain to you that we're going to be offering self-imposed conditions. Do you recall that?
Yes, but the conventional way to do that, Mr. Penn, is you submit the plans ahead of time, so we have the opportunity to review those plans.
Right.
I mean, the purpose of this, there's no purpose of having this meeting, if that's the case, if we're going to table it just to review the plans again. And I have no objection to doing that sort of review, we've done that before, but my point is, that this meeting is almost, this meeting has a little less value for everybody if we haven't had the opportunity to review those plans ahead of time.
Sure.
Were you aware of that concern?
Yes. And I was, well, and, you know, we made certain representations to the residents at the meeting. And I'm here to report to you, tell you that we told them that our, we were going to move forward with a plan that was consistent to this rendering.
Okay.
And we were going to move forward with a plan that only had 27 units. We told them we weren't going to put in apartments, we told them we weren't going to put in stacked condos, we lowered the density. So, I mean, I'm here to report that to you.
Okay, so those are the conditions that you've agreed to going forward?
That's correct, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Winn.
May I ask the planner, Mr. Winn, how does the, what was submitted today, how does it differ from what was submitted in August?
It differs, the only difference was, there was a cover letter from Mr. Penna asking to be back on the agenda, nothing else new was submitted.
No new plans?
Nothing else was submitted.
Nothing that represents what the applicant is speaking to now?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, how about the office, the O2?
The O2, I mean, there was some concern that it was going to be two-story. That was some concern that we gathered from the residents, and we made it clear that we're not, we do not want to implement a two-story office, it would be a one-story office. So, that would be another condition.
So why do you need O2?
Well, O2 allows for some greater uses. I mean, we don't have, it's a future plan. We don't know what uses would come in at the time, so it gives my client a lot more flexibility. And, you know, the O2 is also adjacent to major thoroughfare, and if you take, if you read the language of the zoning ordinance, I know it's geared towards larger developments. This is a six-and-a-half acre development, so, but to answer your question, it gives my client much more flexibility as far as uses. And we would also implement that it would only be one story, not two.
Mr. Winn.
Chairman, that's not entirely consistent with the ordinance says. The difference between O1 and O2 is not that substantial. I think the only use that's different in there would be a bank, and I think we had talked earlier when you showed some plans for that site, Mr. Penn, and your representation was, it would probably be very similar to the office building Mr. Vitale has on the corner.
That's correct.
And in that case, O1 would serve that purpose equally as well. And I think it would have made everybody feel perhaps a little more comfortable if your application would have been amended to represent O1, which is basically very similar, almost identical, with the exception of the height restriction. You wouldn't have to restrict yourself to one story, the zoning would automatically restrict it. So I think that would have been a cleaner way to do it.
So, if this commission would feel more comfortable moving forward with a conventional conditional rezoning, we could certainly do that, and it seems as if that's the direction that the commission would like to move forward. However, we would still like to report our findings, and our findings from, the whole reason why we tabled the matter the first time was to meet with the residents, and, you know, we have done that. And I would like to think that they're happy with this product. I know it's not single-family, however, it's a product that my client would like to move forward with. And again, it is something that is not going to attract a tremendous amount of traffic, it's a product, again, that's geared towards our seniors and empty nesters, and we could do at this point is reserve some rebuttal time, I'm sure the residents have, you know, some comments that they'd like to implement, and we can go from there.
Okay. To the board, any comments from members, Mr. Dalu?
Mr. One, is there a reason that we, they two different parcels and two different uses, is there a reason that we taking them under one application?
It's, I think it's easier to do it that way. I mean, if you felt you weren't comfortable with voting for them simultaneously, you could split them up. But that's how it was submitted, it was submitted as, you know, as kind of a package.
Any other questions? Okay, this is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body, the Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. Anyone from the audience or a group spokesperson is now welcome to speak in support of the project, or against, or just offer comments or ask questions. I would need your name and your address for the record, and if you could, make sure you sign in.
Good evening. My name is Karen Birdy, I'm an attorney, and I've been hired by the Pheasant Run Homeowners Association. Obviously, I'm here because they are not in agreement with this proposed plan. Many of you hit the nail right on the head right away. I do a lot of zoning work, and they're asking basically for a gift or an accommodation from the township, and in so doing, I believe they have an obligation to tell you exactly that which they want to do. Without having the ability to actually look at a plan and review whether or not it needs variances, setbacks, the density, et cetera, I don't know how an intelligent decision can be made, but many of you have already voiced that, so I don't want to reiterate that. I also reviewed, if you will, the different uses in the different zones, and absolutely, the request far exceeds that which they are presenting, far exceeds. I think it was already pointed out, the difference between O1 and O2, we have a rather high-intense use that's being asked for in the R6, when in fact, it was R1B. Why are we jumping to that extent so quickly? It's important to note that when the purchasers of Pheasant Run bought their homes, they checked out the associated zoning, and what was going to go in behind them was R1B. It's not R1A, which they are. I mean, Pheasant Run was one of your premier subdivisions, it was featured like you wouldn't believe back in the 90s. I actually went and toured it as a real estate agent, I do both real estate and law, and was highly impressed. Your community is known for its luxury homes, and I think you guys should be very proud of that. So I'm questioning why we would entertain putting such a high-dense use right next to abutting this. I did take the opportunity to read your master plan from beginning to end, the plan for this area is residential, the plan for this area is high, low-density use with basically high-luxury type of accommodations. The gift that they're asking for from you is this blanket gift that just says, "Give us the zoning, and then we'll come back," if you will, "and present a plan." The only reason that they could be asking for this more dense zoning would be, of course, a financial reason. And it is not, I'm not against people making money, that's, we're all trying to provide for our families and do well, et cetera. However, it is not the Planning Commission's obligation, and I think you know this, to maximize a property owner's financial gain out of the property. What will happen in this case, should O2 and R6 go through, is in fact, the financial gain would be to the Vitale family, who will not actually be living there and experiencing it. In fact, then, the brunt of this will be both the township and the people in the subdivision. For example, those houses that abut the dense use of the O2 or of the R6, when they go to sell their homes, they will have a difficult time, they will get less money, that comp, that comparison value will then permeate throughout the entire subdivision, and if you will, you will, in essence, downgrade one of your most beautiful subdivisions. And those comps are then used, the sales are then used for taxes, et cetera, and in essence, a situation will be created where it will not be one of the more desirable subdivisions anymore. The last meeting, I wasn't here, and I reviewed the minutes extensively, and the discussion was to basically do what is known as a proper conventional rezoning, meet with the residences, et cetera. I was not included in that meeting with the residences, so I'm not going to comment on that, I'm sure they can. However, I have been told they are not in agreement with the R6 or the O2 or the plan that was presented. It's my understanding, and I'll let them comment more, that they feel that it's a little disingenuous to present a plan to them that isn't presented to the township, in essence, making the residences think that this is in fact what is going to be built there, and if that was the case, why would you not present it to the township? So they were presented, if you will, with a plan, and it's dated March of 2013. So there is a plan that exists that is being used to show residences, that's not being shown to the township, and I find that to be quite disingenuous. I know that it appears that tonight, Mr. Penna is asking to table this matter, so I don't want to belabor this, if you will. If he's going to present a plan, we would like the opportunity to actually review it. I know that there are residences here who want to speak, some of them submitted written comments to you, but we would ask that, in this case, it appears that the cart is being put before the horse, and I would ask that this matter be tabled until a proper, complete application has been presented with the residences having an opportunity to actually thoroughly review the plan as well as the township. Thank you.
Noss.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Seth Rodak, I live at 13836 Pheasant Drive. I own a parcel of land that backs directly to Mr. Vitale's land, so I'm keenly interested in the results of tonight's discussion. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association for Pheasant Run, a position I've held for more than 13 years now. So I'm here tonight in a representative capacity, on behalf of my residents.
Yeah.
And on behalf of the residents and myself, I would like to say that we strongly oppose the rezoning proposal. Before I get to why, I just want to be clear about a certain dichotomy. We have no opposition to Mr. Vitale developing his land, we have no opposition to Mr. Vitale using his land to make single-family dwellings. The issue we have is the rezoning proposal. This is not what we signed up for, and we'll get to that in a little bit, and I thought Ms. Birdy did an excellent job of pointing that out. So I don't want you to think that we're a bunch of not-in-my-backyard neighbors with our arms folded across our chest, you know, flatly refusing any development. There's no one in the audience tonight, none of my residents want that land to remain the wasteland that it is. I don't want dust to continue to flow into my windows in the summer, I don't want vermin and pests and all sorts of loiterers hanging out on what appears to be a wasteland in my backyard. So we are hopeful that Mr. Vitale will actually build single-family dwellings on the land. So let's get to the reason we oppose the motion tonight, or the proposal. I listened with great intensity to what you said, Chairman Moffett. I listened with great intensity to what Mr. Penna said. As I recall, you invited him up to speak and address the reasons why the rezoning proposal was necessary. I did not hear an answer to that question. I heard a lot of, "We want", "I want", "this is what we would like to do."
Let me, in fairness to Mr. Penna, I also then said specifically to talk about the issues, because we addressed these issues in August at length, and it was tabled to go back to the residents. I have no issue with anyone bringing up those issues again, but I'm saying, what I asked him to focus on was, all right, he requested it to be, the issue to be tabled, so he could go to the residents, and I wanted to hear what the response to that was, what direction, so.
Okay. So, we did have a meeting on October 1st at Mr. Penna's office, and we did not reach an agreement. It's interesting, I had asked him for weeks to give me the plans, what it was he wanted us to look at, and I didn't receive them from Mr. Penna until literally 12:19 in the afternoon on the day of the meeting, which completely deprived me of an opportunity to disseminate these plans to my residents, to have any kind of meaningful discussions before we got there. And the interesting thing is, Mr. Penna had these plans in his possession for fully six days before the meeting, and I've got emails that establish this. So this was, in my view, this was a litigation tactic, this was not good faith. And we've had other issues. I've sent Mr. Penna, I assume you want to hear about the relationship and the negotiations and the discussions, and that's why I'm getting into this. I've sent Mr. Penna about 13 emails. Let's go back, let's go back to August 12th, when we had the initial discussion. Mr. Penna showed up and seemed very interested in soliciting the views and the opinions of the residents of Pheasant Run. We went out there, in that corridor, and we had a discussion, and we encountered a different Anthony Penna. Mr. Penna raised the specter of litigation, he started giving us legal advice, he told us that the Planning Commission has no choice but to grant his proposal, because they granted the proposal of the parcel south of 21 Mile, hence they can't do for 21, for the south parcel, and then not do it, they can't grant it for one and not grant it to the other. So he's basically giving me legal advice and telling me what the state of the law is, and raising the specter of litigation. He didn't actually come right out and threaten to sue the Pheasant Run Homeowners Association, but the implication was that he could file a lawsuit, have a valid cause of action against the board, and that he would prevail. This is how things started off. I asked him, right there in the hallway, is your client, Mr. Vitale, willing to retreat from his insistence on multifamily dwellings? I asked him that three times. I couldn't believe this. I'm an attorney, and I have done, I've been practicing law for 18 years, and for 12 of those years, I did litigation. I have encountered opposing councils that have engaged in all kinds of shenanigans. I've had opposing councils lie to me, I've had opposing councils back out of deals, I've had opposing councils refuse to engage in professional courtesies, not grant me extensions. I've never had an opposing council flat-out ignore me. I asked him three times, will Mr. Vitale retreat from his insistence on multifamily dwellings? I swear to God, he pretended I hadn't asked the question. He never once answered that. And I followed up with about 13 emails over the course of the next month and a half, asking the same question over and over again. Will Mr. Vitale retreat from his insistence on multifamily dwellings? This is a big issue for us. 13 emails. You know how many responses I got from Mr. Penna? 13, 12, 11, anyone would guess? I got two responses from Mr. Penna, and I got zero substance. The first response was merely an acknowledgement, "Hey, got your email, I'll get back to you." And after the sixth email, I accused him of ignoring me, and he was apologetic, "I'm sorry you think I'm ignoring you." And once again, he refused, or failed, to address the substance of the issues I had raised in my emails. This was very frustrating for me. And then we went to a meeting at his facility, at his offices on October 1st, that he had invited us to, excuse me. And I thought, aha, this is my chance, I've got him cornered, I'm in a room full of people, he can't pretend I don't exist. And I asked him the question, in the middle of the meeting, we're about an hour into it, and I said to him, "Mr. Penna, why doesn't your client build single-family dwellings on the parcel?" And then I got the longest and most thorough response from Mr. Penna that I had gotten to date, and he literally said to me, "Oh, that would take us in a totally different direction." That was the extent of the exchange, that was the extent of the information he was willing to provide to me. He called us to his office to He called us to his office to show us these renderings and to show us a site plan. And the site plan had condominium complexes on them, and it had an office building on it. I thought we were going there, frankly, to discuss the rezoning proposal. As you know, from the August 12th meeting, we all opposed the rezoning proposal, and he indicated that he wanted to meet with us, solicit our views, talk with us, get our, take our pulse. He would not even entertain the notion of single-family dwellings on the parcel. So there were no negotiations. There was, come look at what we plan on doing. And he, you know, to some extent, he was willing to show some malleability, yeah, we'll move this tree here, and we'll put a shrub here, maybe we'll consider putting a berm here. We'll talk about the landscaping, maybe we'll move this building this way, turn it sideways, put in a cul-de-sac. There was absolutely no willingness on his part to discuss anything other than R6 and O2. This was extremely frustrating for me, to be ignored so consistently and so habitually. And then to go to a meeting where we're presented with, hey, here's what we're going to do, tell us what slight modifications you might want to see. It was, it was clear to me that we were being steamrolled. And essentially, as a result of that meeting, it was clear that, you know, while I am an attorney, I'm not a real estate attorney, I don't do land use, I'm a patent attorney. So my understanding of zoning law is 20 years old. I studied real property in 1994, and that's the extent of my knowledge. And I knew that we needed an attorney because we were getting steamrolled. And, you know, two and a half months later, we hired Ms. Birdie. This is not a decision that we made easily. This is not money that we wanted to spend on legal counsel. We would much rather beautify the front entrance to our subdivision than to pay Ms. Birdie, you know, clearly she's worth every nickel. But that's not how we choose to spend our money, but we felt we needed to because we were being completely steamrolled. So if you were curious to know about how things had gone between us and Mr. Penna, they did not go well. And it has been one of the more frustrating experiences of my professional career.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the gentleman a question? The lot facing Shaner in your subdivision, that's a vacant lot, right? The first lot of Shaner?
It's actually Lot 76.
Is it a buildable lot?
It is not a buildable lot. There's a drainage ditch that basically cuts the land in half. I've spoken with the owner of that lot, and he's advised me that in order to get that lot buildable, he's got to put culverts in. His estimate would be that it would cost about $60,000 to convert that lot into something he could build on.
Do you know who owns the lot?
Yes. The last name is Scroy. I think it's S-G or S-Q-R-O-I. I'd have to look at the actual homeowner association list.
Was he instrumental in the Pheasant Run subdivision, the man who owns that lot?
Is he instrumental?
Did he build the subdivision, or do you know?
Mr. Scroy.
The man who owns the lot.
The man who, so it's actually the widow owns the lot. I've been, I've spoken with her son. So the gentleman owned the lot, Vincent Scroy, he passed about two years ago. She inherited it, and I've had dealings with her, but I've had more dealings with her son. I don't know what role Vincent Scroy played in the building of the subdivision. I did have some conversations with him, I have some understanding of the history. I believe he was given that lot as payment for a debt that he was owed, and that debt was owed by his cousin to him. And he was very unhappy at receiving that lot as payment.
I didn't really want to get into it that deep. Thank you.
When you spend 13 years as president of the Homeowners Association, you learn a few things.
You know where the bodies are buried, right?
Sort of, sort of.
Anyone have anything to add?
Good evening. My name is Kim Beauchamp. I live at 47344 Feathered Court. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I did also send an email to the supervisor, and I'm not sure if it got forwarded to you folks. Okay. I also agree completely with everything that's been said before me. Just to give you some background on myself, my husband and I were the very first homeowners in Pheasant Run, and the first to move in there immediately before Homorama started, which is all the large homes that were spoken about, very beautiful homes that were built for all the people that came in, and all the R1A homes, once those were built and sold. A few more homes were built, all R1A, and those were all by DNT, who was the original developer. Not too long after that, and this was 23 years ago when we moved in, this is my second time I've come before this board in my 23 years, and both were over zoning issues. The first time didn't go so well. I'm hoping this time goes a lot better, and that's why I'm bringing up this issue. After, a couple of years after we moved in, I don't remember the exact timing, but Vince DiLorenzo, DNT, they sold off the remaining unbuilt lots to another builder, who, at that time, our entire subdivision was zoned R1A. All the lots were R1A-sized, they were all developed R1A. There were still several remaining lots open, and the builder knowingly buying R1A lots, bought all of the lots, and then looked at the lots and said, hmm, I really don't want to have to build all of these homes R1A, I'd much rather put R1B homes in there, it would cost me a lot less. So off that builder went, to the planning commission and the township board, asking for a zoning change for the back half of our sub to be rezoned to R1B. Now, at that time, myself and other homeowners that were in the sub, in our naivety, didn't think that would ever happen, that anyone would allow an R1A sub to be partially rezoned to R1B. So we, of course, didn't retain legal counsel, as we did this time, and went to the planning commission, and the board, and Mr. Byer at that time was on the board, and I don't know if any of the rest of you were, and pleaded our case, saying, how could you do that, potentially reduce our property values, all those things? And low and behold, for the reason that was given to us at the time was, that the master plan of Shelby Township was that that area was going to be R1B. We were told that that new owner of all those properties could have his wish, and he got the rest of the property rezoned to R1B. Now, to say we were unhappy is mildly putting it, we were shocked, we were stunned, that the board at that time agreed to take an existing R1A sub and rezone part of the property R1B. All I can say this time, folks, is I sure hope you don't do it to us twice in a row, because it is just unbelievable to me that someone can buy property, knowing what the zoning is, knowing what the rules are, and just assume that they can come in and say, that's not a problem, I'll just ask these guys to change it for me, because that's not what I want to do. I don't see how people can do that. When I buy things, I know what the rules are, and I plan on playing by those rules. When Mr. Vitale bought the property adjacent to Pheasant Run, he knew he bought R1B property. It can be developed as R1B. All of that property, abutting my neighbors' homes, that are R1A homes, have the right to have at least a minimum of R1B homes back up to their backyards. Property values have plummeted across the country, let alone in Shelby Township. I just got my new assessment. My house is worth $100,000 less than it was several years ago. I'm sure my neighbors are having the same problem as the rest of Shelby Township. I sure hope our home values don't drop any further. So please, our subdivision has been hurt once before by, unfortunately, the previous planning commission and board. Please don't hurt us twice in a row. We really would appreciate your support this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the lady, what year did that rezoning take place?
I don't know. We moved in in 79, so it would have been a couple of years after that, because it was after Homorama, after...
I believe you may have misspoke.
It was when Rick...
I think you may have misspoke, I was not on the board.
You weren't on the board then? You don't think so?
No.
It was about 20 years ago. Were you on the board 20 years ago?
No.
You weren't?
I look, you know, that old, but...
No, no, I thought you were. On the board of, your board of, I thought for sure you were. Well, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were.
That's okay. I just wanted to get that timeframe right.
All right.
He's easy to blame for things, though.
Thank you.
No, I really thought he was.
We understand that, yeah.
Okay, does anyone else?
Evening. My name's Michelle Mayer, and I'm 13754 Pheasant Drive. We are the third lot in, second house off of Shaner, directly adjacent to this property. We've been there almost 15 years. Reiterate everything that everyone said I've totally agreed with, just like everyone else. When we left the meeting last time, we were out in the lobby speaking to Mr. Penna, and it was my understanding that he would meet with us to get other ideas of what he could do with this property, work with us on what we would agree to. Me, that did not happen at all. He showed up to the meeting with these pictures of the condos, did not entertain any of the other suggestions that we had, such as putting the office building on 21 Mile rather than on Shaner, which that building would be directly behind my house, which I'm thoroughly opposed to. I don't want to look at the back of an office building, which I don't even trust that they would keep at single level if they're looking for zoning at two level, that really concerns me, that I'm going to be looking at a two-story office building outside my windows. So they wouldn't entertain any, they didn't address any of our concerns. There'd been nothing, nothing agreeable. It was just, here's what we planned, but why wasn't that shown at the meeting like a month prior? So I just want to reiterate again that we're worried about our property values. We did all of our homework before we moved there 15 years ago to make sure that this couldn't happen, and here we are a second time. He just keeps attempting to do this. He's done nothing but moved dirt around for the last 15 years. I would love to see something there, but not condos and an office building.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? What else? Third time?
Good evening. Thank you for taking the opportunity to listen to us. I appreciate the candor by which...
Can I get your name and address?
I'm sorry, Ron Lupu, 13891 Pheasant Drive. I think, as you can see, we're not unreasonable people, and I think the point was made when we purchased our homes, and we've been a resident of Pheasant Run for about 19 years now. And the land behind which I owned my home was all farmland when we moved in. Again, with the promise from both the builder and the township, at the time when we did our due diligence, looking at the land was, at least at that time, told to be R1A, would be the larger homes. Subsequently, what happened is those homes then became R1Bs. Saying that, again, as the association, we did work with the township board, and I believe we've even made presentations to the board at that time, voicing those concerns. I guess what I look at in terms of, when I say we're not unreasonable, I guess, from an integrity standpoint, when somebody presents and states that they're going to do something, I pretty much take them for what they are and for what they say. When the planning commission comes through and develops this master plan, and goes ahead and has a purpose and an idea and a form by which to go ahead and develop that land for the township, I pretty much hold them to it. I mean, to me, I mean, it makes perfect sense that that's how it should operate. But when that changes, again, the manner in which that negotiation takes place is very important to how it should proceed. So, having said that, I guess, a couple of things. I came here tonight with the understanding, and the purpose of this meeting has now totally shifted from what it was. So from an integrity standpoint, I really don't appreciate having my time being utilized to come here when you folks have not even been given the courtesy of the, to be able to look at what is actually being presented, even though we have not had that same opportunity to see exactly how that has changed. We changed our homeowners association meeting to accommodate the ability to be able to review those plans, and I think Seth had indicated he received them approximately four to five hours prior to that meeting, after it had been delayed. So, again, we didn't have the opportunity to review that. Now, this is an observation, I don't know whether it's my own personal feeling, but there was heavy equipment placed at the corner of Shaner and 21 Mile Road for a period of days. And it was interesting enough that prior to this meeting, several days before, that equipment was removed. Now, I don't know whether that's an intimidation ploy, if it's a tactic by which to say, you know what, we think we can go ahead and do it. But I think I'm a person that looks at a person to do what is right. And I guess that is our intent for coming tonight, to be able to speak to you, to say, you know what, we're willing to listen to what that change would be, to stay to R1B, but we're also holding you accountable to do what is right for the residents that, you know, you have been elected to do and serve as part of this township. So, having said that, thank you again for listening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we hope you do the right thing.
Okay. Does anyone else?
Hello. My name is Anne Campbell. I am at 13778 Pheasant Drive. I'm the third house. When you turn to the side, our backyard directly faces the dirt, and it's been very disturbing for us in particular. We had a tree actually yanked out from our backyard when he started milling away at the property. I called Mr. Nguyen several times on the matter, and didn't know what I should do, should I take legal matters into hand? And he came to our house, took pictures, and I heard nothing from that since. It was, we found it extremely disturbing. He would come 6:30, 7:30 on the weekends and start milling, and just dust flying everywhere, and machinery going nonstop. And he's never, ever approached any of us, just as a friendly gesture, to say, listen, we're, you know, this is what I'm planning to do. Never. We've never even, I've never seen the man. And so, and another part is, there's been a lot of wildlife back there that is completely gone now. We've had ducks in the creek and this and that, and it's all gone. So it's just very disturbing to wake up every morning looking out your window and seeing dirt. So I just want to say I'm very opposed to all this, and not opposed to him building what he should, what it's zoned for, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll keep this brief, because you probably heard pretty much everything I'm going to say anyway, but 20 years ago, my wife and I sat one day and said, we're going to build our dream house. And we went everywhere looking. We went to Utica, Clinton Township, Sterling Heights, Shelby Township. We fell in love with Pheasant Run subdivision, because it was a Homorama subdivision, it was the premier subdivision. We liked the size of the lots. We wanted a big lot, R1A. We built a 3,000-square-foot house. And we obeyed all the restrictions. The tree restriction, we built a deck, these inspectors came out and said, you can't build it swing, you change it. We obeyed everything there was. No fences, no outhouses like a shed. Now, we got a builder coming in and says, I don't like the restrictions. I don't like R1B. Let's go build what we want. And that's what we went into this meeting on October 1st, and it was one-sided. This is what we want, this is the best thing for subdivision, Pheasant Run. And we didn't get anything, we didn't hear one reason why R1B cannot be built. When the subdivision north of us was being built, we negotiated, R1B to R1C. Way... the subdivision north of us was being built, we negotiated, R1B to R1C. Waferd, I believe, is R1B, R1C. Why can't this be built, R1B, as it was designed? That's my question. We are not in favor of changing this to R6 and R2 or O2. We want to keep it at R1B. Having a 1,500-square-foot house up against a 3,000-square-foot house, to me, doesn't make sense, and I think it will create two things. Harder to sell your house with that back there, and I believe our property values will decrease. Thank you for your time.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? What else? Final time. Okay, thank you. Mr. Nguyen, comments from the planner, although it kind of preempted you earlier.
Mr. Chairman, nothing really different than what we offered at the previous review in August, that comments that we had were that the application for the zoning changes are not consistent with the master plan. It is indeed planned for something else. We understand that, you know, there may be some potential for O1 along Shaner. The O2 is completely out of the question, in my view. Acknowledge that, you know, 21 Mile Road, the site on 21 Mile Road might not lend itself to the more conventional R1B, just because of the lot sizes, because of the width of the property, but there are certainly other design alternatives that we think would be, would meet the objectives of the residents and also allow the applicant to develop this property. So I've been kind of disappointed with the way the submission has been handled.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, we're not, and just to point out, the property across the street is often used as an example of, you know, a pattern or a template for this parcel, and that's the trilogy site where they developed the nursing facility. And I'd say there's some fundamental differences. Number one, they applied for a conditional rezoning, so we knew what the end use was when they made the application, as they combined the site plan with the rezoning. And the neighbors, and that's that you may remember, they met with the neighbors several times at that time. The neighbors actually showed up at the public hearing and supported the application. So I'm not in a position to recommend favorably on this rezoning at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. The petitioner?
May I just address maybe two points? I won't address some of the issues that I discussed at the last August meeting, but first, I want to make something clear. There was a lot of discussion regarding integrity and people...
Address the board, please.
Yeah, challenging my integrity. These plans that are presented tonight were the same plans that were presented October with all the neighbors. We haven't deviated at all as far as density, as far as design, and wouldn't not submit these plans to this board because it was a traditional rezoning. It's not a conditional rezoning. So we would like to resubmit under a conditional rezoning, but I wasn't, there wasn't a malicious intent of us not submitting these plans to the board, because we wouldn't do that under a traditional rezoning. The second point is, you know, my take from the meeting obviously is a little bit different. There was some discussion. There was concerns that there were going to be apartments that were going to be placed on this site. There were going to be stacked units, and we made it clear that that was not the intention of the petitioner. Now, again, it's not a single-family product. It is multifamily, but it's certainly not apartments and/or stacked condos. So, and there was a lot of that discussion that occurred at the meeting, and we made it very clear to the residents that we would not move forward with a plan that deviated from these renderings. So it looks like we will resubmit under a conditional rezoning application in the future.
Okay. At this point, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support. Who's in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our decision this evening must be based on the following: the practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, three, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and finally, is this proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? This evening, we may recommend approval, disapprove, or table this request to evaluate the information further. This time, I'll entertain a motion. Did you want to withdraw your, this request?
Yes.
Yes, we can withdraw. Otherwise, if there's a recommendation for denial or approval that goes to the board for next step, do you want to go through that, or?
No, we do not want to go through that.
Okay, so you're rescinding this application?
That is correct.
Okay, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what's the difference between R1B? How many homes can we put in R1B versus R16, which the petitioner is saying 27 units?
Well, I mean, it really depends on the dimensions, but, you know, R1B is a 90-foot lot. These are, they're getting six, they get six units per acre. If I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman?
No, that's, it's a good question, and I think it'd be useful to see there's ranges of options, and I think when you're looking at alternatives, it's nice to have some plans that show those alternatives, and that's, you know, you have the current zoning, which yields two to three units per acre, and you have the other zoning, which yields six units per acre. You know, what does that look like, and what are some options that might be in between as compromises? And I think that hasn't even been explored, which I find, after all this time has passed and not having any of those issues explored, I find profoundly disappointing.
Mr. Penn is listening now, so if this does get resubmitted, then I'm sure these issues will be addressed. Okay. Next item is Planning Director's report.
Nothing to report. Additionally, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So for the public, he's rescinded his application, so it's dead. So whatever else happens is a new application, new process. And with that, I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Who's in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.[1715.98]